It's gonna be a long one. You guys, this new is like a really good meeting, I think. All right, so we will call the May 28th, 2025 regular meeting of the Board of Stockman to order and we'll start with the pledge.
Pledge of the House to comply in the United States of America, in the Republic of America, under oath, in the name of the Constitution, of the Constitution, of the Constitution.
Any comments from the public? No? Are you sure? All right. All right. So, okay, we'll start with approval of the minutes. Could I get a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of May 14th, 2025? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? No?
Yeah, one minor grammatical error. Page two, fifth paragraph starts Ms. Cheesegrove, "Thank BFW Board and its members have been willingness to partner with the town." That's it.
Anything else, Debbie?
Nope.
All right, all those in favor? I motion carries. We have nothing under correspondence. And then, appointment for the REC Commission. Could I get a motion to appoint Chris Gomes as a regular member of the REC Commission? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I think everybody was very excited about this new addition of Chris will do a great job. Also exciting, a Stonehenge High School graduate. Could I get a motion to appoint William Fike as a regular member and then Rob Simmons as an alternate member for the Cemetery Commission? So moved.
Second.
All those, or any discussion?
I just want to say, and I, over this weekend, I had somebody approach me and say, especially what a great job Will is doing and all the posts and the information and so, you know, he's doing a great job. I'm so glad he decided to stay.
Anyone's approaching 18 and wants to get involved in a town board, we'd be really eager to have you. All those in favor?
Aye.
I motion carries. Nothing under old business, because we have 10,000 things under new business. All right, so, under new business, very, very excited, we have, I'm like, still nervous, I don't want to jinx it, but it's real, an award of bid for the Mystic River Boathouse Park project. Mike and David, would you say that it's been over a decade actively?
I figured it out today, it's 123 months.
123 months, that. This has been, a lot of people have been working so hard on this for so long. So, you guys in your pocket got an overview of the award of bid information from Jill Sullivan, our Director of Finance. And what I was going to do is to go through each and every one of the bids and do a motion for each of them. But just to say, again, like, this is the second time we put them out, we, everybody put so much work into redoing this. I think some people thought we were a little bit insane doing this at six separate bids. But it paid off, because we, which we'll get to later, are probably around 400,000 short on the project versus well over a million. So, it's really exciting. So we'll talk about that later and then we'll be going to Board of Finance next week to talk more with them. But this is really a big moment. So, we'll start with building demolition. For building demolition, we received five proposals in response to the bid. The lowest bid was Connecticut demolition with a bid of 47,000, but they did not include all scope items and were disqualified. We notified them, they missed, they shared that they misunderstood the scope of work, so we are recommending to go with the second lowest bidder, who is Su Haki and Son, with a bid of $53,997. It was determined that Su Haki and Son is a qualified bidder capable of completing this work. Could I get a motion to award the bid for building demolition to the Mystic Boathouse Park Project to Su Haki and Son in the amount $53,997 contingent upon approval of the Board of Finance and the State of Connecticut Department of Economic Development?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? This was probably the more complicated one.
Yeah, no.
Any questions on this one?
No.
I think so.
My only question was, it was subject to approval by the Board.
Yep, and DECD, because that's where money's coming from, most of the money. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
I motion carries. House relocation. A big thank you to Mr. Odeon for help on this one. We received only one proposal in response to this bid, despite I think a lot of outreach. But the bidder is an expert house mover, and they were called expert house mover with a bid of $59,500. Could I get a motion to award the bid for the house relocation for the Mystic River Boathouse Park Project to expert movers in the amount $59,500 contingent upon approval from the Board of Finance and State of Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development?
So moved. Expert house movers. He said expert movers.
Oh, thank you.
Expert house movers.
Yes.
Second.
Any further discussion?
No, this is great. I know we've wondered what this was gonna come in as, and this is an excellent.
The historic home will be preserved. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
I motion carries. Helical piles. We received one proposal in response to this bid from Conti Company for $121,141. I was determined that they're qualified and capable. Could I get a motion to award the bid for the helical piles for the Mystic River Boathouse Park Project to Conti Company in the amount of $121,141 contingent upon approval from the Board of Finance and the State of Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Learned, I learned a lot about helical piles in this process. All those in favor?
Aye.
I motion carries. Site concrete. So we received four proposals for this. The lowest bidder for the project is P&amp;H Construction with a bid of 449,125. They again were determined that they are qualified and capable. Could I get a motion to award this bid to P&amp;H Construction in the amount of 449,125 contingent on Board of Finance and DECD?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a quick question, just to confirm. So, because we were wondering this, this is all, both foundations and the sidewalks?
Everything, all the sideways concrete.
Anything else was concrete? Okay. The steps and all that stuff?
That's the bulk, that's for the docks.
Okay, great.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that. Little cuts right back, yeah.
Okay.
And just to know, P&amp;H worked with Su Haki on South Anguilla Bridge project for us, and we were very happy we pulled up them.
Okay, good.
Just side note.
One question, I guess I should grab it up, I wrote helical piles, where do the helical piles go for boat foundations?
They're just for the boathouse, right?
For everything.
For everything, for both houses?
Boathouse and the ramp.
Is that, so the concrete work, the concrete work happens on top of the helical pile?
Yeah, so basically the helicals are to deal with the fact that it's a main site, it's all kind of filled, it's been brought in, and then there's a kind of strata of material where you get to kind of a stable, that rock type of structure. So the helicals go basically around the perimeter of all the buildings, as well as all the ramps and structures, like the hemidome and back, and then they pour what they call a pile cap on top of it, which is a footing effectively.
Like a, like a big altar cap.
Exactly, it's a great, correct.
Any other questions? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
I motion carries. Site work, this is a bigger one. So we received four proposals, and the lowest bidder was Su Haki and Son with a million 742. It was determined that they are capable and qualified. Could I get a motion to bid the site work to Su Haki and Son in the amount of 1,742,000 contingent upon approval from the Board of Finance and State of Connecticut DECD?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
So, this includes grading, construction of the cap, bringing in the fill, this is all of them, okay. Not the living shoreline, but the rest?
I think it does include.
Or doesn't include?
It's everything.
Oh, cool. Okay, great.
So that is comprehensive of all the other work.
Okay.
So site lighting.
Parking lot.
Parking lot.
Sorry.
Electric, everything.
Okay, great. Oh, thank you. That's what I was hoping.
Yeah, I think it was everything, yeah. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I motion carries. Hey, I'm really, just thank you to Mike and everyone, I mean, it's been so much work behind the scenes for years, well, before even any of us got here, that you've stuck with this. And David, I know you've done a lot of work, and John Thornell, and then we have a whole Boathouse Implementation Committee, but people really stuck with this, so thank you.
Well, thank you to the town. This is gonna be a huge asset if the town wants to get it built. It's super exciting to finally get this underway, to show the ground.
It's gonna be very exciting.
So assuming we hear back from DECD in the next three weeks or so, we're looking at maybe breaking ground, potentially? At least with the demo this summer?
Probably, probably, late June, early July.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, it'll really, Jim and then Kent Frost team have been working, and John Wilson have been working really hard to get everything ready, so then it will just be, obviously, Board of Finance next week, and then to the state, to how long it may take to approve our everything. But they've been pretty good about being responsive, and, so yeah, so hopefully then we can get started. And we do want to, once we get the okay from the state, we want to do a ribbon cutting, so stay tuned for hopefully a June ribbon cutting.
Okay.
And what's the expected time plan?
So, fully like, operational, like done, like, would we say next spring, not this spring, next spring?
Yeah, we're hoping to be ready for the spring season next year.
So like, a lot of the work would take place this summer, fall?
Is that including the boathouse?
Yeah, the boathouse.
Which is exciting. And then, some plantings have to happen, then I think it's the following fall to like, take.
So both docks then?
Yes.
Wow, good.
Isn't it amazing?
I do, that's great.
It's gonna be so good. Not one. All right. Just waiting for something to go wrong. Thank you. Any other questions for Mike? All right, thank you. Okay, also exciting news. White Rock Bridge, the one we shared with Westerly, we received six proposals in response to this bid. The lowest bidder for the project is Arboreo Construction Company with a bid of 949, oh, sorry, 585. Our consulting engineers, our like dedicated bridge engineers, WMC, have reviewed the bid, references and all other associated documents, and we determined that they are qualified and capable. I also reached out to Westerly today, just to 100% confirm, they are also ready to go, and they have their money, they confirmed in writing today, so, and we have all the money already approved from the Board of Finance, so this is just for the award of bid. So could I get a motion to award the bid for White Rock Bridge Project to Arboreo Construction in the amount of 949,585?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on this.
So this is our part, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's gonna be my question, is this the total amount, or is this our?
In your packet, I think Chris has a whole memo, there are so many bridges right now, I can't even like, think about it. But either way, I mean, we've already, all the funding is approved, it came in actually just under what we approved, so there's some extra contingency.
Yeah, so the total bid is 949.
Yeah. So then that's probably, yeah, that would make sense. Do you remember, that would probably be the whole amount, and then we get reimbursed by Westerly by 50%.
Okay, the next question was, because we're paying and then they're reimbursing us.
Yeah.
And yeah, my other question, I guess is answered, I would say that it was 33, oh, no, that's less than a second there, how does it compare to the estimate that we went to work with?
It's actually just under, because if you guys remember.
A drop of a million dollars?
No, I think it was like 20,000 under, or something, 30,000 under. We, we went to the Board, or Chris went to the Board of Finance, because, remember the punky concrete? And it was really expensive, so we had to go and get extra money for the project, and, but then when we actually put it out to bid, it came in just a little bit under, so that'll just be some extra contingency if needed, if not at all.
Close, anyway.
Yeah, really.
Not much under. So that's good, that's, that's actually.
But not over.
Exactly, that's.
And Chris is very grateful to get to the Board of Finance for getting this money, the engineering money sooner, because now he's able to do this ahead of the other bridges that are under engineering now, that might be hopefully ready for the spring. So, they're kind of coming in next week, minus the other thing that we'll talk about later.
So this'll break ground soon?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they're like, ready, we'll give all the, yeah.
Cool.
Any other discussion?
How long will that be closed?
I don't know, but I know they've been working with the PD to look at events and look at like, anything that was over there, so they're coordinating with them on it.
It will be totally closed, there won't be like, one man.
I don't remember.
I don't know.
I don't remember. We can have Chris send an email update.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, because sometimes they just do one. Yeah, sometimes they alternate. It might be.
But here's a complete replacement.
All right, we'll send, have Chris send a email update after that. Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
I motion carries. Okay, this is a longer one. Okay. Bond projects. So, as a follow-up to our budget session and discussion regarding bond items, and after it passed, we met as all the department heads to go through priorities, and then the school was kind enough, we also met separately with the school team and with Jim, our Director of Finance, to come up with this wonderful spreadsheet before you. So basically what we did was try and go through timelines for everything that we had talked about being in the bond with the Board of Finance, and then prioritize a Phase 1, a Phase 2, or what could likely be pushed off to a future SIP, because it's either, we can go through it, but like, uncertain future, or, you know, we're already over the bond amount, so we pulled it out. But mostly, it's, it's all in here, just phased, you'll see, and we can go through them like, in notes. Some things are just engineering phase now, and then Phase 2 would be the potential construction. We're just voting on Phase 1, but obviously it's helpful to, like, be able to see the whole picture. The only two things, I'd say that have, three things actually, that have changed since our budget discussion highlight really quickly, and then we can also go through other things in here, but the very first one, the town dock north pier, so the bids are actually supposed to come in tomorrow, but they've been pushed back a week, so they're gonna come in actually June 4th. But based on the engineering estimates, we think that project is anywhere from 400 to like, 800,000 over what was originally estimated, which was, I mean, in fairness, like, four years ago. After stalking most of the federal government. We finally found a contact point within the SBA where we got the fund, the 900,000 to do the construction work. They understandably said they, you know, they cannot give us any more money, they basically lost most of their staff recently, so, they said, and they definitely said we're at risk of losing it. Our extension goes through this calendar year. So, we have 900,000 federal funding, we don't want to lose that. We luckily have great state partners, so we've been talking with Representative Baumgartner, Representative Meskers, who's the Chair of Commerce, and then the DECD Commissioner. We've put in a bond request, and they're also talking to DEEP about some potential leftover funding they might have at the end of the fiscal year, but there's no guarantee with that money, and we are supposed to be starting this work ASAP. This is the north pier where all the larger scale boats tie up, so we're definitely at risk of that pier failing and losing those boats. So, again, I think this hit kind of that emergency status, so that was added in with a $400,000, kind of, you know, if we need it, the state gives us money, then that will just, you know, be able to be used in another phase.
But as of right now, the only other funding is the 900,000.
Yes, we.
900,000 and 400,000 is.
Yes.
Which you're anticipating.
We can value engineer certain things out, like that, that gap was like, we'll do as a, we did it as a bid alternate, that's what like, the boat owners, you know, wanted was some more things, I mean, pretty basic things, but more things that we can value engineer down, we think, so we would just be about, and DPW said they could probably do about $100,000 work in-house, because some of it is like paving and stuff afterwards, but we think no matter what, we're gonna be about 400,000 short. And then we did get 250,000 from the Port Authority for the engineering, so that's done.
No, I think this makes sense.
Yeah, it's unfortunate. Again, hopefully, maybe our state partners will come through, but I, just, so we can proceed, I think we need the money there, again, also, will be a discussion with the Board of Finance. The other change added in Mystic River Boathouse Park, so, I added this in here because my recommendation to the Board of Finance is actually that they just approve a line item transfer. We should have about, we met as also department heads to go through what we think we're gonna be getting back at the end of the year, it's about 460,000. So, we have 107 that's not allocated right now, so, they could do that from a line item transfer at the meeting next week, but if not, since we were going first, I thought it'd be good that we, if we could approve it in the bond, and then if they decide, no, we'll take it out, we'll do line and transfer, then it's fine, it can come out. But just to be safe, I will add in that 328,000 will be a discussion point with the Board of Finance, but we had talked with them probably over a year ago, if you guys remember, and we've talked about it too, the ARPA money that was left, that we needed to spend or lose it, we did line item transfers with like DPW equipment, stuff like that, so we have 328,000 left of that, that we specifically said, please hold this for the boathouse, because we didn't know where the bids were gonna come in. So, we have that, and we might need up to this extra 107,000, which includes a pretty hefty contingency.
So this is a different draft of the spreadsheet, and originally it was 128,000?
Yep, so it's 107. We, when they did the, like, the scope review with all the contractors, they were able to get some of the costs actually down, because some things were double counted with them, it was during the geotech.
Down, down to earth.
Down to earth, yeah, so they were, there's basically, they were kind of doing things twice, so that all kind of came down a little bit. And then we were debating about how much contingency, but this actually has a decent contingency. And Jim and Molly are still trying to shore up all the numbers, as you could tell from Mike, not many spreadsheets, this is kind of happening in real time with some of these projects. So again, hope, we might not need that for the bond, but if we do, wanted to put it in there. And then the last fun one is our failing bridge that snuck up on us, Collins Road Bridge slash Culver. So you can see, for this fiscal, for this bond phase, we're only asking for 20,000, because Chris will be going to the Board of Finance next week to transfer money he has in another bridge account to this, so, so, but we'll be short about 20,000. That'll be for the engineering work. You'll note for Phase 2, we've put in 600,000 into the bond, because that is a very high level estimate, Chris scrambled to try and get with WMC for what we think that could cost. But we do want to apply to the state bridge program in May, we'd know by July if we have it, so that's again why we thought better for Phase 2 for the bond.
Is that gonna be a replacement?
Yes, and it, um, yeah, it'll be, they're still trying to figure out if it, because it could be a full-on bridge, it could be more of a culvert, there was like, all these, and Chris said, you know, he's happy as we get closer to knowing more about the project to come in and talk directly with us, but right now, it's just, they're trying to put out fires, but all the signs went up, so, and all the school buses were converted and fire trucks.
How was that discovered?
Part of our bridge analysis, part of our programs, they did the scour testing, I believe also like, the Quambuck Fire Chief had been, brought it up, I think also maybe blunt, brought it up too, because he lives over there, and so it was kind of on the list to check up the, I think, 19 bridges, so, and then they did the load testing and it did not pass. So I think those are the only big changes. The school is here, if you have questions for them, but before I go to them, if you guys have any questions for me on our Phase 1.
No, your only questions are school.
Yeah, mine too.
All right.
There weren't also, one other thing.
Yeah.
On complete streets.
Yes.
Is that a specific project?
No, so that's why I put that one down in the SIP for next year, because it's just for engineering. And again, there's, as we've talked about, there's a number of areas people would like us to look at, but it's just for engineering, so I mean, it could be a whole discussion for SIP, so that's why I pulled it out, whereas complete.
Drainage issues, flooding, flooding areas, or?
That, the complete streets would be more for like, connectivity for sidewalks. And then, we do have, we whittled it down for drainage improvements for project backlog of projects. I put 150 in Phase 1, Phase 2, same amount, and then I did still put 200 in SIP, because we do have a pretty significant backlog, but again, we would just be looking at right now. And then the only, the actual sidewalk project is to complete, hopefully, Route 1, South Broad Street sidewalk. Engineering is close to being hopefully done, we think we could have a permit by the fall, and then, we could start work. We did put in a grant for this, probably six months ago, the STEEP grant, so again, if we get that grant, we can reallocate that money, but if not, I feel like people have been waiting for this final connectivity across from the Walgreens for a long time.
Yep.
And I can't say enough about the property owners, they've been so great, we have to do some significant changes to their property, and they've been really wonderful.
Great, and that'll be good to get that done.
It will be. Anything else on town stuff?
Just a comment on this, only because, from the circle work, I understand, even Home Street down to the bottom, because there are some other potential.
That's why, yeah, Clifton advocated that we change that for community input needed for both Home Street projects, because yeah, he said during that resiliency walk and talk that some people have different ideas and thoughts, so we thought we should do more community engagement before deciding anything.
Exactly.
All right, perfect. Okay, so the school, just to give a high level overview, and then we have four, four esteemed members with us today. But just to say, for Phase 1, what we're looking at for the school is the middle school facility needs specifically the second floor of the Mystic Building, changing a wall in the Pocatuck Building, then the purchase of the portables, and then fuel, two fuel tank removals that our Director of Finance really felt like needed to be done now because of insurance issues, viability issues, and then Phase 2 is when we'd be looking at the high school roof, the SMS boiler.
Which school is that?
It's joint to, um, the Boiler, Steve?
Is that Field or Miss Tuxit?
One is the Boiler.
Yes.
Is Field Street, it's a partial on a four-year plan to replace the Boiler.
Yeah, yeah, so that's like a 1.28 million, so, we, I changed the number, thanks to their help, to be now, you could see in Phase 2 like what you'd need for paid that year, then two more years out. The turf and track replacement is in Phase 2, and that's really it. So if you guys want to focus more on Phase 1.
High school roof.
It's Phase 2.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, didn't hear you say that.
But so if you guys have questions for them, I mean, on anything but particularly Phase 1 is what we're looking at tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Or you want me to?
Please, go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, I have several questions, just trying to understand this. So I understand that, so the Board of Ed voted that the portable classrooms are what they want, and that's fine, and that's good. Are we gonna be able to see, because I've never seen like, the architectural, you know, the sketch and the, you know, where that cost estimate comes from? Is that something we're gonna be able to see?
It would, I mean, as of right now, there's, in that estimate, that is a high level estimate, it came from our structural review, there's 17,000 in there for, to do a set of drawings, inspect the replacement of the floor.
Okay.
So there is no drawings at this point, or details on the replacement, and then the estimated construction cost was 170,000 to replace the second floor.
Oh, that, okay, that, actually, I was talking about the portables, but I had to question on the second floor, too.
Oh, yeah, 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 sorry, sorry.
No. No, yeah, just because I, I hadn't seen anything with like where, with the sketch of where they're going. Do we have that yet or?
No, unfortunately as of right now, so where we're at with the portables is, so I've done the survey of the property, I've met with electricians, da-da-da-da-da. At this point, I can't actually complete a set of drawings with a location until I get an engineer, I want location from the portable manufacturer until I get awarded money and I can't pick a portable manufacturer. So at this point, I'm actually, I'm, I'm at a standstill.
So you'll, you'll be looking at the standard bids, three bids and scope and all of that.
Right, so as of right now, because of the, of the, it was proposed, is, was proposed to have a higher, um, like Colliers as an engineering firm, but at the point of time, it was to move forward at this point in the best you can. So right now I've been using social contract, which is seems to be an open contract in the portable world is a basis for a cost.
Okay, okay.
So I mean, I, whether that goes to or not, I mean, in the, in the cost estimate, there is an inclusion for Colliers to be involved. At that point, if the town feels like a bid is required, then it can be written at that point, so.
Alright, so yeah, because I just was wondering where the numbers were coming from. But you're going to end up with those once you.
Yeah, I'm using social, and, and basically there was, I, I got three cost estimates. There was the, the year they take it back. And there was a five year, we buy it for a dollar. And then there was the, just purchased the, the portable, which ended up being the most economical in the long run for the amount of years that we feel like won't have it. And, and amongst that million, there's about two hundred and fifty thousand in logistics. That would be utilities, gutters, had, had road around the, we still have to fire, extend the fire road around. We're not going to pay, but we're just going to do like a, a blue stone road around the, the portable too. Because I've met with every department up until this point and like, you know, get as close as I can.
Okay, no, no, thank you, that, that's helpful, that, um, but my other cost was on, so I understand that you guys have, you know, picked Field Street as the long-term with the portables. So I was wondering why, you know, I read the reports. Why the repair would be in Phase One? Because it seems that the reports say, I mean, obviously maybe shouldn't use the second floor, but it doesn't say anything about not being able to use other parts of the building.
So that, that, I mean, that's correct. The, the, the ultimate from the beginning, when initially we were to move the kids from the school, the failure of that floor was the critical number one issue by the lack. And, and, and in that reason, the, the floor is actually failed inside. So the, the four cars of structural board of the piping and all the infrastructure for the school has got peps screwed off underneath it. And it's based on the engineer's report, the, the HVAC system, which is a plenum-based system. It doesn't have any ductwork on the return, which is not the craze. Carries moisture up into the ceiling, which is now causing the complete, excuse the word, the FRS. So it, it's actually starting to break apart even more. But there's actually a wood attached to that floor. So we've got some severe cracking and some light cracking on the floor, but we have a, a portion that probably P eights, the, just about P eights of an inch on the floor, so the floor's failing and coming down. And it's also a ceiling, so it has to be replaced.
So you're using that part of the building?
So we're using it on the, on the lower site, but if, if the floor's replaced, we can use it up for part as well. But at this point, we're using the lower site underneath that ceiling, yes.
So our story is made.
So it's not just about the kids coming back, but for us to be in that building.
In that section of the building? Yeah, I didn't understand there was anybody in that section of the building.
Just because the finance from the state, which is still up in the air right now, we want to at least be ready to move our offices upstairs so that we can grow Allison's program. We're still are up in the air about special ed funding and things like that. So if we can use, make more use of that space downstairs to catch more kids, keep them in district, we'd like to do that.
Okay. One thing I was also asking, because it's something I know we really need as a town, and understanding you're expanding with special ed, but it seems like if we are going to put the repairs into that building at this point and not in the second phase, there might be an opportunity for the library or something to become a town meeting room, which we really need. So potentially the town could share a portion of that building. And it seems like that might be something we could look into if we're going to put the money into the repair.
I would certainly work with this first-class woman to figure out what the implications are for that, but we have space.
Yeah, well, that's why it seems like we have the space and we're badly in need of a meeting room. So something to, something to think about, um, if we're going to be going ahead and putting money into that. My other questions were about the underground storage tanks. So, I mean, I kind of do that for.
Right, right.
I'm kind of, I'm kind of a big deal in the underground storage tank world.
It just seems like, and I understand that in Mistoxit, it's not just a removal, it's a removal replacement.
Yes.
How big is that tank?
So right now, when it ground is ten thousand gallons.
Does it have to be ten thousand?
No, I, I actually downsized it to eight thousand when I brought it up above. And, uh, and it's, uh, it's a common, I was missing that right, complete and double wall.
It is, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so.
It just, it just seems like a very expensive bid to me.
It is very expensive, it is very expensive.
And do, we don't have the space that it, like, if it costs that much just because you're taking it out, have you looked at maybe abandoning it and putting the other one?
I, I don't, I don't think the cost is so much taken out, because if you look at the high school cost of removal.
Yeah.
And, and refill, I mean, I believe it's around seventy-two thousand.
Yeah, and does that include all the environmental testing and closure?
Yeah, 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 yeah. And they'll test the soil and submit it, so, um, hopefully there'll be any issues, but they'll test the soil. But the, I think the, one is partially maybe the location, because it is in the patio of the cafeteria. The tank is actually up, it, you go up cafeteria doors, you stand on the field tank. And then you'll, obviously we can't concrete type back in that location. Right outside the doors, we're actually moving it to outside of Millian's office.
But yeah, and I'm just wondering if you've looked at or if you'd be willing to like talk to the farm marshal and see if it might be less to abandon it in place. I know you have to still do the testing, but the cost of the testing is certainly a lot less than three hundred thousand dollars.
Right, right, I mean, I, I, I could talk to him. I am not, I'm not a fan of abandoned tanks on property, let's go grounds, because it's just something that gets dug up later or it's something that you cause a, I mean, they clean it, you fill it, the liquid fill. I mean, it is a common practice, you know?
Very common, especially when you have a big tank that's hard to, to access.
I can actually get a breakdown if it, it would help in the.
That would, that would be helpful.
For that removal and fill in replacement of patio, you know, so.
Because it just seems, I looked at that cost and I was like, yikes, that's a lot of money.
The, the, the Commonwealth tanks are not cheap.
Yeah.
They are not, and it's who everybody's going to, I don't know if towns put the tank back underground right now.
Yeah, oh, yeah, exactly, and that's why it's like so much, it just seems like a lot. And, and I'm sure you'll get, you know, bids on everything, but it just seemed maybe looking at abandonment might save.
And, and, and there is, so I mean, actually, I believe the actual call came in around three twenty from the Van Der, from service station equipment, who are on the state bid system. But, um, I wasn't sure if you guys were going to follow that or go with the state bid, so I did add engineer, redundant engineering in a bid to go up and bid into that project. So you have options if you accept the state bid, then it's forty grand in engineering and it's fast, you know, so. I tried to do the best I could without.
No, I understood, and yeah, I just would be curious about the abandonment, if that might save some money. I mean, because it is, especially if it's off the state bid and service station equipment, they do half of the ones in the states.
Right, they do, they do almost every town around here, so it's, they're.
Alright, okay, um, no, thank you, those, those were basically my main questions, sorry.
Yeah, just to back up a bit, I'm, the Board of Education meeting minutes didn't really reflect the reasoning behind choosing the portable classrooms over the movement, moving the kids back to Mistoxit after floor replacement, which the engineering report said could be done in a timely manner.
Yeah, that's.
First of all, the, this is a big point of misunderstanding, is that I want you to remember that when that consolidation happened, there was a different administration and a different facilities director, and I'm not putting blame on anybody, but we have a new facilities director that has a new set of eyes on all of the buildings and has found a myriad of issues that have not been addressed. From the new buildings and boilers that weren't properly ventilated, on and on and on. And also has, has his eyes on not just the sinking foundation and the collapsing floor that started all of this kind of inspection, closer look, but other complications. I'm going to let Breakheart explain those. But, you know, I would, there's many more things that need to be fixed and worried for the kids to come back in that building. Safety concerns that we have. And when we say ventilation, everybody thinks that we want to put air conditioning in there. That's not the problem, there's something that I'm going to have you explain.
Yeah, right, so.
Please.
Your circulation issues that are there.
I, I'm going to start back when I started here, that was in, on the fifth week of employment or fourth week of employment. I would, I, I.
Hundreds of thousands of dollars to go back.
I, I gave to our Board of Finance meeting with a thirty thousand dollar allotment to do an engineering drawing for the parking lot, ex length and middle school. So that was a, what the board did approve after one walkthrough of that school. On my own, I asked if I could change that thirty thousand in the facility study. I didn't quite get in as much trouble as I thought I was going to need to, but because that board did approve one thing and I asked for it to be due somewhere. The, the, the school had four tarp's on the units on the roof, so there's blue tarp's on the units. The ventilation walk in the rooms, some classes had air, some classes did zero air. The school, the ventilation system is based off a plenum return system. So what happens is in the hallways, it's just an open ceiling and there's a vent that retract, the return airplanes goes back to the units and then comes back in. It, it, it's not, I, I mean, it's good in skyscrapers, it's just not good in schools. The, it's not a good system for a school. It's not clean, it's not cleanable. I mean, you've got a ceiling with ceiling tiles, and if you look in the ceiling tiles, if you walk the school around every single ceiling tile that's like there, where it's actually sucking up from the, the floor, ceiling tiles are not a sealed system. The, the overall system itself was installed in ninety-seven and, and it has met its life expectancy. So it's not just the commitment of asking, can we move the kids back into the school? It's the many of the things that have got to be done. If the life expectancy is spending another hundred thousand dollars in however much more, can you move kids back into that school? What the commitment is to that, and we will only put in a new HVAC system. And as of right now, the structural report says that the, the hallways will can, will bear no further weight. They've already deflected, all the hallways have deflected, it's not just that one hallway. So in, for us to correct the ventilation, we have to add ductwork. There is no more static, static wood allowed on them floors. So that means we replace the floors and the hallways to add ductwork. So the, the, when it just keeps going on and on. When we, when I first found that building, the, the elevator was without insight by three inches. We used to come along to pull it back straight. The elevator needs a life assessment. It's just everything in that building is. I just, I don't want to say.
But, so even in comparison to Pocketop though?
So compared, that's a good point, very good point. The, the Pocketop building was built in nineteen thirty-eight, it's an older building renovated in nineteen eighty-seven. Overall structurally, it's a good building, it's sound, windows are about thirty years old. They're coming up for replacement. There is a still problem with Pocketop. The sills, the, the sill plate didn't ever galvanize when they first built the buildings in the thirties. So the brick is swelling above the windows and we're getting some water penetration. I got an estimate at Place One, it was about ten thousand in the silk and compasses, in, in compasses for windows. The deck was without going out for drawings, going out to bid, and it's probably going to be four hundred thousand to replace the sills in the building. The HVAC system is, has ductwork both ways, returning supply. It, it, it is a lot better condition, even though it's older, it's in a lot better condition than the units at SMS. The roof on both schools is pretty well comparable, they were both done roughly the same time. I would say the, the, the overall structure in building, the, the building maintenance has been better over the years in degree. It's a, it's a, it's a cleaner, safer school at this point.
Yeah, the, the tipping point for me then, when we had a con, the most recent conversation we had with the engineer, after the useful life study just came out, it was, I don't even know how many useful now, but the most recent study came out, we had a phone call with him. And he said, just because it says that without repairing that foundation, the floating foundation that we have, without repairing that, the building can have up to ten years of useful life, which sounds great. He said, however, he said, look, the, the kinds of climate change that we're seeing, the weather patterns of inches and inches of rain, he said, you could move those kids back there if you fix the floor and do all these other things. You could move the kids back there, in two years you could have a, a, a failure in your stairway, losing egress and have to move the kids back out. So we can't.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I was assuming that if you did move the kids back there, the, the structural work would be done at some point.
But it is much more, yeah, at some point, we're not going to, you know, it's not smart. The other piece, there's all these other inconsequential pieces too, is that we cannibalize the building at two oh four with all the technology, all the newest clocks and, and board electronics. They moved them over there, just moved them back. Not only are we losing another summer for our tech department, our custodian maintenance department, they lost a summer, so we're behind on all of the maintenance work in the other buildings. We could lose another, it wouldn't be next, this summer, because we can't have the repair stuff anyways in a timely fashion. So there's a lot of those, those things that are built in and the dollars just don't add up for, for return on investment. And for me, that tipping point of, it was a horrible, horrible feeling to come back from spring break and have this guy waiting for me in my office saying, boss, we've got a problem. And I don't want to be in that situation again of, of having to move kids. It's not, it's, the building is not suitable right now for a large population of kids.
There is, and there is a many, I mean, and we touched a few things. I mean, just before we left that building, it was in for a new park, our parking lot redesign, um, which was approximately estimated at six hundred thousand because of traffic congestion and no drop-off. There was a hundred and thousand, thirty thousand allocated for pavement repair. Thirty thousand allocated for carpet repair. And, and, and these are jobs that were, these were things that were in the works in that building. And, and even at the point of the six hundred thousand for the redesign of the parking lot, the one that dislodge in that parking lot, we have to provide more containment. Right now the building doesn't have a filtration system for the parking lot. If you go to parking lot and, I mean, it, it, we're going to be blasted and it's going to be hard to claim containment to run lines. So I think six hundred thousand, in my opinion, is an underestimate for redesign of the parking lot. Once we actually get into doing that. And these are things that were required when we were there, to see when we go back there, that we don't need that anymore, it doesn't make sense. You know, it's like the, the past didn't happen, but it did happen and that's where we're at. And just to continue to put money in a building that's got two point five million dollar, possible two point five million dollar foundation repair that's got a failing ventilation system and it, it's ready for, I mean, I think me talking and me, in my opinion, I think the town either, if they do a, a school command, they do a facility, it's going to spend sixty, seventy thousand for somebody else to tell you it's done, you know? It, it, I, I think that's what it needs for the town to understand where that building's at. I do this for eleven and the building needs a lot of work, you know?
Thanks for that assessment. One other question, what's the retail, the resale market for portable classrooms?
That is a really good question, not a lot, because we looked at some for free, we tried to go get some. We tried to get some and, and people had given them away and they're just not, they don't, I don't know what it is, I, I don't know. And whether it could be used in a different location. The cost of moving it is around ninety thousand dollars to break it apart and move it and relocate it, whereas the town's got another spot for it if it becomes nonusable at the school, jury, addition, I'm just winging it right now. Maybe you could give another spot for it where it could be used for public works or whatever, you know?
The other thing to keep in mind is we have all this building going on in town, on one side of town. We haven't seen that influence the population yet. But I can tell you the elementary schools are pretty stocked. And so down the line, that portable classroom, they have to be moved to a different location.
And the five, the five year lease for the dollar five bike was actually more than purchased in the seventh, the year with the, I was returning it, came in, in the seven, I'm, I'm, I'm estimating, I think it was around seven hundred and sixty thousand. The deck still included the two hundred and fifty thousand logistics. That was in every quote, you know, it's not, that, that's the infrastructure for the, getting power to the building, putting in ramps.
Yeah, understood, okay.
Thanks, sir. I think what would be helpful, because you've answered a lot of questions tonight that, you know, we had questions. If there was some kind of, like, we could make our contingent approval on that you put a little memo together that kind of explained some of this, like why it's important to do those repairs at Mistoxit. You know, some of that information, basically what we're asking, you know, why it's time critical to do those repairs, because.
On the, on the floor, on the floor?
On the floors, yeah.
I, I've got an email from the engineer, because I thought you would ask, I can forward that to you.
Yeah, just so the Board of Finance has that and just, because right now, I'm sure they're asking the same question I am. Why is that in Phase One? Why is that not in Phase Two? So to understand that.
Yeah, I think they linked it to the kids going back rather than, no, you know, there are people in the room that are walking around like.
Well, that's what's important to know, it is time critical because of this, this.
Right, and it is an occupied building. Any other thing to consider in the investment of the three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars is when the Board of Education did go looking for a space, not using that building because of the structural issues. I think the rent per year was over a hundred thousand. So you've got like, I mean, if we had ten years of the buildings as Board of Ed offices or whatever, that's closer to a million without any inflation, you know, somehow.
But I think it'd be great if it also maybe did talk about, or if you talked to Danielle about maybe the town meeting, having a town meeting space in there, because that's something that we really need badly.
We used to have the cafeteria, it was great.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, the, um, the Parks and Rec Department have used that building to the max actually, so they give full advantage of that gym, because it's a full-size gym. You know, unfortunately, we're busing kids from Field Street, that would be at this. we're blessing kids from Field Street. That would be, that would be an issue with Field Street is it is a half or a three quarter gym and we actually bless kids to have more room in, to 204 to use the gym for games or practice.
All right.
Thanks a lot for that.
Thank you. No, that was helpful.
Yeah, I think just to, yeah, summarize Debbie and Ben's questions, I'm sure the board of finance will have the same. So I think, yeah, just having that memo. And Steve, if you want to just send it to Jim or I, and we can be sure it gets to the board of finance.
Can just reclarify what exactly you want in the memo. You want a detail why the, the second floor should be replaced in stage one in the.
Yeah, exactly. Why it's time critical to do that. Why it couldn't wait till phase two.
And just because, yeah.
Engineer?
Yeah.
Yeah, I did ask him because I figured you would ask. So rather than me saying something else again.
So like Debbie said, the reports are great, but they weren't specific to that.
Right, right. It was more in the beginning, the initial beginning reports were about that second, the second floor issue. That's, and it kind of got lost in the structural fail as well, you know, so.
And they talked about it, but they didn't, I didn't get the impression that it was time critical and that you couldn't be there other than to not have office space up on the second floor.
Right. And at that point, it was a concern to be an unoccupied building. We were, we were leaving house, you know, that was a given. So that, I don't think that issue was even, you know, approached as like, hey, remove it back in, you know, so we are in there.
And Steve, also, I think, if you were okay with that, I think Ben brought up the same questions that I've brought up and I'm sure board of finance members just, and you summarized it so well, like about the ventilation and kind of that issue, because I think that gets to like the general question. I think we've gotten from a lot of people just, why?
Yeah. Why did you pick one over the other? And you answered it well tonight.
Probably could point them from the recording.
Trying to be financially smart for the town. Like if you spent two and a half million on the foundation and then you're going to, and then we've threw this number out before, but if we have to replace floors to do another structural breakdown for ductwork and we have to go through elevators and safety upgrades, I mean, that building is going to, and then we get a sizable project for the state's going to make is bring it to code. So I mean, it's going to be, it's going to be more than $50,000, but if you're investing in a building, it's not worth it. And I actually asked the engineer, if that building failed because of the law and the type of construction, and the engineer's response was, I don't care how good a building you build on that law, it would ultimately fail because the law is ledges won't. So he put it a lot nicer than that.
Bad combination.
He put it a lot nicer than that. That's basically where it is, that the law, with the decision when that building was built, was the failure of that building. So.
No amount of helical piles can save us. Any other questions for the school? Thank you guys for being here and next week too. So if not, just to summarize, what we have in phase one is like a little over 8.2 million plus about 600,000 contingency that we added in. So the total is 8.838, sorry, 5.8. So, and then phase two is like basically almost like 6.6. And so the total is still, sorry, got cut off, but the total is still fine for being under the 5, 15.5. It's just, it's a bit more heavy loaded in the first phase. But again, I think based on department head and then school feedback, this is kind of where we are with all of the projects that need to get done. So do you guys have any other questions or comments on phase one?
I had a question mark on the fourth district, portable homes, but I can't remember what I wanted to ask.
All right. So I think we put that down to the SIP too. So yeah, it'll be, plenty of time if people want it for next year's budget.
Yeah, everybody that I don't remember.
And Chris did just, I was, he was great in checking in. White Rock Bridge will remain open with alternating traffic.
Oh, okay, great.
He's on standby. Okay, so could I then get a motion to approve phase one of the bond projects contingent upon also having the board of finance approval next week?
So moved.
So moved. I was just thinking, I'd love, I'd love to say in contingent on getting some of this information that we asked for, for the board of finance explaining.
From the school.
From the school.
To the board of finance. Okay, so yeah, I'll amend the motion. So if I get a motion to approve phase one of the bond projects totaling 8.838, 528, I sound like a robot, contingent upon board of finance and the school administration sharing the memo we just discussed with the board of finance. All right.
So.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oh my goodness, aye. This is so exciting. I really hope this helps us, given the craziness happening in the world. So then just to let you guys know, so if the board of finance does approve it next week, people can start spending against it and then it'll take us a month or two to go to actual market with it. But Jim's going to try and do that as quick as possible with the uncertainty of the world. If the board of finance has questions or feedback or changes, we will then need to like meet again. So we'll, I know you'll be away, so we'll try and communicate that and figure out what will happen.
When's the board of finance?
Next Wednesday. So soon. And the board of finance will be getting the spreadsheet tomorrow. We wanted to wait until we have the chance to discuss it, but board of finance members will be getting it tomorrow. So they'll have just about a week to look at it. Okay, that's good. Okay, so set the call for a special town meeting on June 16th, 2025. And just because there are so many students in the room, just to quickly share. So our form of government is a town meeting form of government. So anyone over 18 who's registered to vote actually comes like in person at the high school and it used to be like a show of hands to say, you know, if you were for or against things. Now we have a ballot. People check in, confirm that they are registered to vote or own property totaling over $4,000, about that $1,000 and then they can vote. And typically we send things to referendum to vote really, really usually only the budget or if it's something very, very controversial or huge, a big money sum that has to be spent. But town meeting is our form of government. So you'll see all the fun stuff that we're going to be talking about. So first, we have a resolution for an ordinance to implement a tax abatement program for volunteer firefighters and volunteer EMS personnel in the town of Stoneington as a way to recognize their service, improve volunteer retention, and encourage increased participation in the town's volunteer emergency services pursuant to Connecticut general statute 12-81W. Said ordinance would provide a tax abatement for volunteer firefighters and volunteer EMS personnel who live in the town and who volunteer for fire departments and ambulance services who regularly respond within the town. The abatement amounts are based on eligibility related to a scale of volunteer activities. That's the first one. And you guys have provided feedback on that in the past, so thank you. Second is a resolution to adopt an ordinance of the town of Stoneington, Connecticut revising the Stoneington Harbor management plan and separating the plan from this ordinance. Third, a resolution for an ordinance in the town of Stoneington to regulate open burning and recreational fires within the town of Stoneington to protect public health, safety, and welfare and ensure compliance with state of Connecticut open burning regulations. Thank you to Captain Schneider for working on that. Fourth, a resolution to terminate the previous committee and create a new Stoneington K-12 school building committee to assess, plan, and oversee improvements to the town's public school facilities with an immediate focus on the long-term needs of the middle school population. Fifth, finally, a resolution to authorize the purchase of certain real property located at 160-162 South Broad Street, Parketuck, Connecticut, from the VFW Harley Chase Post 1265 for $285,000 on additional terms acceptable to the board of secmen and town attorney, and to further authorize the first secmen to sign any and all documents necessary and incidental to effectuate, factuate, sorry, said purchase, be it hereby resolved that pursuant to section 3-3 of the charter, the board of secmen calls a special town meeting for Monday, June 16th, 2025 at 7:00 PM at Stoneington High School, 176 South Broad Street, Parketuck, Connecticut, to consider and act upon resolutions as outlined in the notice of special town meeting, which will be attached to the minutes of this meeting as appendix A. Could I get a motion to approve the resolution to call a special town meeting on Monday, June 16th, 2025 at 7:00 PM?
So moved. Second.
Discussion on the town meeting.
Nope.
Pretty much, we wore them out. Yeah. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, so all that people can vote on. And then the last thing is comments from the secmen.
Okay.
All right, Debbie?
Just really short, I did attend a meeting with Circa and to discuss the mystic study, the resiliency study, and I think they're going to update you on it as well.
Yes, John, reach out.
Which is good, because they were trying to pull some priorities together and some ideas before they prepared their report. So it was interesting. And one of the things that we talked about are the different alternatives at Home Street, you know, whether there's alternatives to the seawall to maybe let, you know, a little more circulation in that area. But again, nothing was finalized. So it was interesting and I was happy to attend. But that's all I had.
All signature fraud happening in the back, signing off on students at the meeting. They didn't want to wait one extra minute.
I know.
We're almost done. Okay, I'll be really quick, because that was pretty long for us. I did just want to say, we had really, two really good meetings that we could really use help from anyone and everyone with getting the word out more. So one is cycling without ages. So that is like a group of volunteers who got, it's like an international program, but they basically, typically elderly, but could also be disabled, but more, a little bit more focused on seniors to get them out. And they have a bike and a contraption, I forget what it's called. It's not like a rickshaw, but basically it has a special name. And they have like even like a nice little comforter. They can go in any weather. And they have a partnership with the Como where they go once a week and people can like book things. So we're trying to connect them more with the PNC to see if they could actually bring people there. They sign up, they have a good partnership already with Pendleton. We set them up last year with Edith K. Richmond and we had a number of residents actually go around and do them and really like it, but then it was hard to keep it going. So we're going to reconnect them there. I'm a Stoneington arms. But if you guys have other ideas to one, just get the word out, but also like who else or how else, it's Liz and Richard Stern who have been kind of, we met with more recently, but there's a few other people in the community who've been doing this and they're really wonderful. But it's like, I think we just have to get people to know about it more. The Commission on Aging is going to help to try and promote it more. But yeah, if you have ideas or if you talk to people, it just, it really is a great way. Like they get out and they go around and it's been shown to help with like a range of different kind of cognitive, just like loneliness issues. But it's also just fun. It's nice to do. But so that was one thing. And then the other one related to that is the Commission on Aging came in this week to talk about the Year Community Cares Program, which we love, which is where you get volunteers in the community, get matched with, yes, seniors who are in need, yeah, take their trash out, do yard work. We've had like, I think like 12 and 12 maybe, 12 people sign up actually and 12 volunteers, but only four matches have actually happened. A lot of yard work, a few driving things. But again, we could use help, I think, getting the word out more because we obviously think there's a bigger need for it. And it could be anything from running, you know, running errands to, you know, companionship, kind of just like, or, you know, housework, cleaning, yard work, trash.
Is there some sort of share post?
Yes, we can reshare around. And there was a video that the chair, co-chair and chair of the Commission on Aging did, I think, and Human Services. And so it's, it's an awesome program. We just need to get more things out there. So if, again, you have ideas, we said, maybe they could have a boost at the farmer's market. We said maybe the Stoneington Village Fair. If you have other ideas for how to get the word out.
Yeah, if you repost that, then at least we can share it.
Yeah, that'd be great. And you can share with your respective town committees too if you want. And then last thing, I'll, just because the school people here, I'll say, it's been so nice, for the fourth grade class, I got to go in for both schools, elementary schools, and talk about like local government and civics. And unfortunately, the scheduling only worked out for one, but we had someone from Congressman Courtney's office come with one of the schools so we could talk about federal and then kind of local. And the fourth graders were so great and they had so many great ideas. And we talked about the P O C D and we're like, what do you like about the town and what could be improved? And like they had really, I mean, like really sweet things they liked about the town, but some genuinely good ideas, some improvements, including like, I'm picturing this at the circus lap, like a place where you, they were like, don't worry, you'd have some security, like you have a code. They are like already more advanced than I am on technology, but to like take out fishing gear. Because they're like, fishing gear is expensive and not everybody has it. So if you could have some fishing gear that people could take out and then fish in the Parketuck River. And like, they had really, like, I thought, like, things like that, very thoughtful and very community minded fourth graders. So it was really, it was very lovely. It was like, I didn't want to go back after that.
We're definitely going to go to the P O C D rollout.
They should, because I was like, they have some really, like, this is your, and they were so cute because they're like, in 10 years, we'll be over 18. Like, well, you know, we could be involved in all of this. So they were very sweet.
That's good.
I know. So that was good. But I'll stop there. I feel like there's a bazillion things happening.
The only other thing that I guess we could say something about is the tab. We did have the presentation on the brownfield inventory.
Oh, yeah. Thank you for leading on that.
So they will be sending us the final results of, you know, perhaps it'll be helpful in the future for grants, you know, something all we can look at.
Yeah. No, and thank you for leading on that. And then I guess we won't have a meeting before then. So not this weekend, but next weekend, we're having a pride event that some residents helped us. This is the second year we're doing it. And we're partnering this time with the town of Westerly, which is so great. So we're going to issue a joint proclamation between two towns. Westerly is a little bit more advanced than us. They have a whole giant thing in the park, but we're going to start it down at Hugh Park and then walk over. And we're going to have some like, just like art supplies. People can make like inspirational things and stuff. And then we'll go over to Westerly, do the proclamation. They have a lot going on over there, but it's June 7?
Seven.
Yes.
11 o'clock.
11 a.m. So if anybody wants to come, I think it'll be really nice. Anything else? I'll stop there. All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks.